Great, good timing on that. All right, so number two is the approval of the meeting minutes. We actually have two meeting minutes to approve. The regular joint meeting on May fourteenth and the joint budget meeting held on May twentieth. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Are there any amendments, changes, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. Um, oh, we forgot introductions, sorry about that. Let's do introductions on my far right, I'm rushing too fast. Go ahead, Dave.
David Mikowski, Board of Finance.
Glenn Heiser, Board of Finance.
John Mays, Board of Finance.
Marie O'Brien, Board of Finance.
Sebastian Pinotto, City Council District One. Eric Rosenbrandt, City Council District One.
Sue Tyler, City Council District Two.
Jeff Cagiano, Mayor.
Jacqueline Olson, City Council District Two.
Cheryl Tebow, City Council District Three.
Ron Burns, Board of Finance.
Mark Peterson, Board of Finance.
Right, we're not missing anybody else, good. So that helps you guys with attendance too, I forgot that, sorry.
Mayor, Mike Mazzarelli is on speakerphone.
Oh, okay, so Mike Mazzarelli is here, duly noted, thank you very much. All right, um, number three is the consent agenda. Does anybody wish to withdraw anything from the consent agenda? I know there was a question earlier, I think it was answered, so we're good.
It was answered.
Yep, very good. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
So moved.
Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. Uh, and now we go on to number four, which is the equipment building sinking fund contingency. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Great, any questions or comments on this? Uh, and just for the audience, because we have a larger audience than normal today, a lot of these things have gone through all subcommittees and they come here and that's why the joint board gets together to approve all the finance things, but uh, they've been well vetted. All right, I'll call the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number five is the police professional fees. Uh, the motion would be to transfer six thousand dollars from the general fund contingency account to police professional fees.
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And then the unemployment account, uh, motion would be to transfer fifteen thousand dollars from the general fund contingency account to the unemployment account?
So moved.
Second.
Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And then we have dark trace. The motion would be to transfer a hundred thirty-three thousand dollars from the equipment building sinking fund contingency account for one year of dark trace from the city and the BOE. Can I have a motion? Yep, and a second?
Second.
Great, uh, and I just want to comment on this one a little bit. This is a little bit unexpected, uh, this is a cybersecurity, um, uh, funding that we're doing. It is actually going to do something that's pretty cool. It brings both the Board of Ed and city together on the same platform. It is something that I'm going to want the Board of Finance first to look at and then the City Council to eventually look at all of IT expenses as one big whole umbrella. So this is, even though it was unexpected, it's coming from our contingency fund. I think it's a good investment, safety for the city and gets us to our longer term goal. So, any other comments, questions?
Just to clarify, this is for the emails for both.
Correct, right, so it's cybersecurity, so as emails come in, you know, by the way, I've had a ton of phishing emails just recently. They've actually been testing out this system, so they're not blocking those emails. They're just confirming, so if you get one of those emails, please hit the fish report on there. It will confirm things, but this is an AI system that will learn and uh, prevent us from even accidentally clicking on, on those emails in the future, so. Money, not cheap, but money well spent and hopefully will save us some money in insurance costs over time. Certainly over potential ransom and things of that sort as well. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? Motion carries and we move on to our monthly reports. Diane is away at a conference, so uh, she has a very viable stand-in and Robin is going to go ahead and give us the update on the monthly report.
Relate is on, correct?
You're good, we see, yep, you're good.
So I'm sure you all had a chance to review Diane's report. I'm not going to read it to you because I know you can all read, so I'll just highlight a few of the key points in it. Um, with regard to revenues, the current year tax revenues are a hundred and sixty point one million dollars or ninety-nine point five percent of budget, which compares very favorably to last year, and we have no areas of concern in that. Yeah, we do expect to collect additional dollars throughout the year, which we hope will make budget. Related to that, we have prior year tax revenues and interest in liens, which are also significantly over budget through May thirty-first, um, which will help with surpluses at the end of the year. Moving down, um, building permits and conveyance taxes, building permits are at a hundred and forty-six point five percent of budget, conveyance taxes are at a hundred and fifty-one point six percent of budget, obviously both significantly over budget, but less than last year. We did expect to see a decline in some of these areas due to one-time, um, transfers with real estate conveyance tax or one-time building permits, so that's the reasoning for that. The biggest revenue area that, um, has such a huge surplus at this point is investment earnings. Our budget for the entire fiscal year for twenty twenty-four is nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars and through April thirtieth, because we don't have May posted yet, our budget, are we received almost two point four million dollars. So we have significant surplus in that account, which will definitely help within a year-end monies that we need to transfer to set up reserves for next year. As Diane noted, in expenditures, we don't have any specific areas of concern that we're worried about at this point. The Board of Education is still working to analyze a lot of their open purchase orders and get all their invoices in, so they can give us a better figure of where they're going to end the year, so we don't have any definitive number on where they are. Questions on any of that information or any of the municipal report information? Would be happy to answer that.
Any questions?
Just in.
Oh, go ahead, Marie.
In total then, in total, for this fiscal year, what do you expect the surplus to actually be?
That's, I can't answer that right now, Marie, unfortunately. Um, I know the Board of Ed reported at our May meeting that they said their deficit could be, and I don't want to put words in their mouth, but um, Linda said it could be up to a million dollars, but I know she doesn't have a definitive answer yet. We're expecting, um, significant surplus on the city side due to these revenue line items and also expenditures that were not made in some of the expenditure accounts, but I just can't give them.
So if you were to ignore the Board of Education's budget deficit for this fiscal year, given this report, um, is it two million? Is it three million? Two million, about two million?
And then we'll work with Dave, Mayor, to make recommendations to the Board of Finance for setting aside reserve funds for next year.
Thank you.
And also as you approved tonight, all the capital outlay that was purchased out of a sinking fund, that's what we use the surplus monies for, to replenish that sinking fund, so for the twenty twenty-six budget, we'll have money available to pay, you know, for that capital.
Great, good question, because I think we were going to try to address the Board of Ed stuff as well, so I think you nailed that one. Uh, Dave and I and Diane, uh, will also be meeting with the Board of Ed, is it next week?
Next week.
And you will be there, so thanks, Marie.
Just a couple more things I wanted to let you know about. Um, our auditors are coming out July tenth for a planning meeting, which is the initial kickoff for our audit, which, um, is for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Um, preliminary audit work will begin on August twelfth, so the auditors will be out here and start their testing and working with the departments. And last week, the comptroller's office held fiscal year-end training, um, to refresh the departments on our fiscal year-end processing, so that they would be aware of everything and make for a smoother year-end process. That was well received and well attended. Those things.
I don't question.
Cheryl?
And this could, Robin, maybe you could answer that, or maybe the Chair of the Board of Finance, um, you know how we routinely audit a different department? Is there, has a department been chosen for this upcoming audit or this next year? And what would that be?
We have not, uh, discussed that yet or come up with anything.
Okay, thank you.
There'll be one, but we haven't identified the department yet.
Thank you.
Good question, thank you. Any others, anybody on Zoom? Wait, you're not quite free yet, Robin. Anybody on Zoom? Nope, I think we're good. Uh. It, it, well, let me think, no, Board of Finance. It'll be at the end of the month.
Yeah, we talked.
The end of the month, so, and just to put that out there, I guess, because we have everybody here right now, so, uh, traditionally, June is the reappointment time, but we always get confused on whether you finish your month of June or July. When we do our City Council meeting, that most of you won't be here for, on the Board of Finance, we're going to make those appointments very clearly stated that they start on July one, which means Ron and others can do subcommittee meetings, they'll do the Board of Finance the end of this month, and then July one, literally right away, we'll be able to continue to do subcommittee meetings with the new, uh, Board of Finance replacements. But, um, this will be their last joint meeting, so, uh, congratulations on a job well done. Uh, Ron, many years. And, and full of public participation, and thanks to Robin. Do you want an outgoing speech, Ron, for this group?
No, just thank you for, uh, thank you for the experience.
Yeah, well, thank you for your service, we really do appreciate it. So he had two minutes to go ahead and speak as well too, but is there any other matter to come before us? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Bye, Ron.
See you at the Board of Finance meeting.
What do we got? It's bullshit.
Okay, are we ready for this meeting, ladies? We're good to go. All right, it is seven oh-two, I will call the Bristol City Council meeting to order and we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. On my right is the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the freedom of the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the liberty and justice of the world.
Okay, um, as part of our opening ceremonies tonight, I just wanted to do something that we do, uh, pretty much annually, and June is, uh, migraine and headache awareness month, and so I have a proclamation here, I'm going to call Renetta Stokes to the, uh, dais, and I'll just read the end of it, but she's going to probably add some flavor to what migraine aware, migraine awareness month is all about. I therefore, Jeff Cagiano, Mayor of the City of Bristol, do hereby proclaim June twenty twenty-four as migraine and headache awareness month. In testimony whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and caused the great seal of this city of Bristol, Connecticut, to be affixed on this, um, the eleventh day of June in the year twenty twenty-four. Thank you for considering this important gesture of support for our community. I'm hopeful that with your leadership, we can bring much needed attention and support to this critical health issue, and I, I know you wanted to say a few words, so as you say those words, I'll come around and we'll take a picture.
Thank you for recognizing chronic migraine headache awareness month. The day is actually June twenty-ninth.
Is the button?
Yes. Thank you for recognizing chronic migraine and headache awareness day. Chronic migraine awareness day is June twenty-ninth, it's nationally recognized all over the world. Thank you, Mayor, for continuing to support chronic migraine awareness. As you know, migraine, you may not know, migraine is an invisible disease, unfortunately, it's not highly recognized. Disease Awareness Month plays a vital role in raising public knowledge, addressing stigma and building a stronger community of patient advocates. I myself have been diagnosed with migraine, I've had it since high school. Unfortunately, I passed it along to my daughter, hopefully not my grandson, but she, they came to support me. Um, everyone has a headache now and then, but everyone doesn't have a headache disorder. The WHO, World Health Organization, as you all know, also states that one in seven adults worldwide has migraine, and that it can be more, three times common in men than in women. They also have a migraine awareness month, as you all, I just mentioned, June sixteenth is Men and Headache Awareness Day, June nineteenth is Disparities and Headache Day, June twenty-first is called Shades for Migraine. If you show you care and wear a pair, tag me in it, just send me a picture of you with your shades on, I can send it along to the organizations that I am also proud of, be a sponsor of, and it is just showing that you care, that there are people that have headache and migraine disorders. June twenty-ninth is Chronic Migraine Awareness Day. So again, I just want to say thank you for your support and hopefully we can continue. This has been going, uh, two years, I want to say, we've been doing this, and all my organizations.
What, uh, what is your dinner? What was it, or is it?
Um, it was my concoction that I made of peppers, onion.
We now know what Peter Kelly has.
Yep. I wanted to hear the recipe.
And Renetta, be sure to, uh, just tag the mayor's page when you post that, all right? Thank you. All right, uh, number two is the appro, oh, uh, okay, good, the approval of the minutes from May fourteenth. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Are there any comments, questions, additions or changes? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, number three is public participation. Um, we have Patricia Ulin, uh, up first. You want to approach the microphone, if you can just state your name and address for the record, that would be great.
Patricia Ulin, twenty-one Jerome Avenue.
What would you like to speak to us about? Go ahead, animal control, I see here, go ahead, right away.
Um, I'm president and founder of the five oh-one C-three nonprofit Friends of the Bristol Connecticut Animal Shelter. For the past ten years, we've helped Bristol Animal Control get their dogs and cats adopted to good homes and, or saved to reliable nonprofit rescues. Over ten years, uh, my wonderful officers have, um, changed as their ability to donate their time ebbed and flowed. That is my corporate officers. Um, today I stand as the only active corporate officer. At age seventy-six, I'm dedicated to everything my nonprofit was founded to accomplish, but I need officers to participate with me and possibly carry the banner forward. Every animal I placed from Bristol Pound either went to a rescue organization that I knew was trustworthy and honest, or was adopted by us to a home that I had checked thoroughly, that the people owned their home or had the okay of the homeowner to adopt a pet, that any current pets were a good match for the new one, and that they had not had any history of animal abuse. I take pride in knowing these dogs and cats went to safe, loving homes. I say all of this not to applaud my efforts, but rather to set the bar for how animals are handled going forward. Volunteers are hard to find these days. My energy at age seventy-six is considerably less than it was ten years ago. Um, I would be thrilled to continue forward, but we would need to recreate new off, uh, recruit new officers to work with me, and they would have the same, have to have the same devotion to the cause that I do. If anyone hearing this wants to step into an officer position with Friends of the Bristol Connecticut Animal Shelter, please contact me. Um, you can email me at friendsbristolanimalshelter@gmail.com. However, I also recognize the possibility that younger people out there who are part of other nonprofit groups might be better suited to carry on my mission. My sole goal is simple, that every animal that enters Bristol Animal Control as a stray ends up adopted into a lifetime loving home. And so I stand here as your servant to serve future animals that enter Bristol Animal Control in the best way that the city of Bristol deems best.
Great, well, uh, thank you for your service. I, I hope that a lot of people are listening here, but I have to be honest about the way the world works today. I think social media might be a better way to get this out as well, so, uh, just like I just asked for Renetta.
Start here.
Yeah, no, it's great, and, and I think that's a, a great place to start. Thank you for your service, and let's see if we can get it out there on social media. I see some press here as well, so, um, you know, continue to, to put your mission out there.
Through the chair, could you please, um, give the email address again?
Yep, friendsbristolanimalshelter, all one word, at gmail dot com.
Through the chair. You know how to get ahold of me, right? Reach out to me and I'll, I'll see if I can put on some of my social media. Thank you.
Through the chair, I also want to thank, uh, she's been, um, we've talked many times and, you know, her, you know, she's, her heart's in the right place and, and she's worked so hard for the animals and we all like to share the pets that are available, but, you know, I just want to give you a heartfelt thanks, and again, if we get this message crafted, we're all willing to share this. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you for your support on the new animal control facility and getting involved with that group as well too, and I know that we're, we're moving that forward.
Look forward to the new building.
Yep, we all do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Renetta, I know you signed up here, but we took care of you earlier, I assume. You don't have anything else to add. Uh, anybody else in City Council chambers wish to address the council? How about on Zoom? Okay, we'll move on. Um, number four is announcements, I think I said it on my left last time, so I'm going to start on my right this time. Sebastian, go ahead.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we've been given a date, uh, from the Friends of the, the Public Library of July fifteenth at two PM at the main library this year for the author reveal for the twenty twenty-four Friends Author Luncheon. There's going to be a short presentation and refreshments courtesy of the Friends, and a raffle to win tickets to the Author Luncheon this fall. Uh, as a reminder, this year, the library has set a date of October tenth for the Author Luncheon. Uh, details have yet to be confirmed, um, as far as time and, uh, actual location, but the reveal is, uh, this July fifteenth upcoming, excuse me. And I also wanted to share some cool news, uh, from the Bristol Blues, and that's that their, their league, the New England Collegiate Baseball League, has partnered with ESPN+ uh, for the season, Blues Homes Games on June twenty-sixth, July seventeenth, and the twenty twenty-four All-Star Game on July twenty-first, uh, where we hope some Blues will be this year. Uh, will be streamed to the twenty-five million plus or so subscribers on ESPN+. Uh, that's, that's in addition to the league streaming service available on their own plat, platform, uh, huge publicity and marketing opportunity there for the Blues, uh, to be able to get in front of more viewers, so, um, thanks to ESPN for, for providing that platform, uh, twenty-five million plus subscribers, there's nothing to sneeze at, so hopefully we'll see the Blues there also.
Excellent, and I think it's the first year that we're hosting the All-Star Game, so.
Yeah.
Hopefully we get a, a full crowd.
Right.
For that one. Thanks, Sebastian.
Thank you.
Eric?
First one's going to be a little long. Um, the Bristol, the, uh, city of Bristol is inviting residents to participate in a free food scrap recycling pilot program beginning July first, twenty twenty-four. Our food scrap recycling program is brought to you by the Bristol Public Works, uh, and sponsored by ReWorld, formerly Covanta, and, uh, collected by Blue Earth Compost. Based in Hartford, food scrap collection bins will be placed at the yard located at ninety-five Vincent P. Kelly Road. The program is free to all Bristol residents. Blue Earth will collect, collect the food scraps and haul them to Quantum Biopower, a state, a State Department of Energy and Environmental Protection-approved. Aerobic.
Aerobic digestion.
Digestor, digester in Southington. In twenty-one days, um, Quantum can convert the food scraps into compost and convert the methane products inside, uh, the facility into biogas that generates electricity. Bristol pays to have municipal, uh, municipal solid waste incinerated at, uh, ReWorld, uh, at the ReWorld facility. Data from the Connecticut Department of, uh, Energy and Environmental Protection states at about twenty-two percent waste in the food stream. Uh, the ultimate goal is to reduce the amount of tonnage incinerated by removing food from, from the trash and, uh, and other surrounding towns such as West Hartford are participating in a similar scrap, uh, food, or scrap recycling program. If it grows, it goes, uh, is the motto, is, is Blue Earth's motto. Acceptable items include fruits, vegetables, meat, poultry, bone, shellfish, uh, shells, dairy, fruit, there's a whole list. Um, no leftover spoil, coffee grounds, uh, paper towels, napkins. Two-gallon kitchen compost bins with compostable bags are available at the City of Bristol Works, uh, office located at City Hall on the second floor. Uh, you may also use your own bags and containers, so for more information, look at the, uh, Public Works website. All right, next, um, I know this isn't a hundred percent Bristol, but Frankie's used to be a Bristol favorite. Um, they're having a fundraiser for, uh, Trooper Aaron Pelletier's family Saturday, December twenty-second, a hundred percent of the proceeds from the sales will be donated. Raffle tickets will be available Monday seven, uh, Monday the seventeenth through Saturday the twenty-second, um, at Frankie's, this is the Plainville Lake location only. Lastly, Zorba twenty twenty-four Greek Festival, we have thirteenth through the sixteenth, uh, live music, uh, Greek dancing, uh, rain or shine, and it's at Saint Demetrius Greek Orthodox Church on thirty-one Brightwood Road in Bristol. Admission is free. The land.
Thanks, Eric. Susan?
Um, thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a couple of quick ones, um, for the senior center, just want to let everyone know that they are closed on June nineteenth, which is Juneteenth Day, um, so if you know a senior who likes to visit the senior center on a regular basis, just let them know that that day they are closed. Um, our police department has two recruits graduating from the New Britain Police Academy this Friday, so we, we look forward to welcoming two new offers, officers on board. Um, and just to kind of piggyback off of Sebastian's, my husband and I attended our first Bristol Blues game of the season last night, um, it was Bob Night, a lot of fun. They didn't believe me that his mother almost named him Bob, so we had to pay for our admission to get in, um, but just to, um, it, it, it's a great family night and there's not many places that you could go and bring the family for such a low cost, so I just wanted to mention a couple of the other theme nights that they're doing in June. Uh, they have Mustache Night, Schools Out Night, they have a Father's Day game, they have Teacher Appreciation, Bark at the Park, that's on June twenty-third, I'm bringing my dog to that one, um, and they also have a nineties night, uh, there's another whole list of great themes that they're doing in July, so let's get out there and support them. They were winning, I think, five zero until my husband and I attended last night's game, and I think we ruined their record a little bit, but.
Final one.
Um.
They did beat Danbury in the, in their home opener, which is a big deal, so that's good.
So what do you do for nineties night? I know the eighties was big hair, seventies is disco, but what is nineties?
It's nineties music.
Okay.
Or I, I, I'm not sure, so I guess we're going to have to go so that we can find out. Um, it was a great evening though, and just, uh, real quick, um, this is an announcement, um, maybe this will take care of my committee report as well. Um, this is the time of year, our blight complaints are coming in like crazy, tall grass, and I just want to remind everyone that there is on the website, there is a link to file a complaint with, um, our code enforcement committee, so it's really easy. Um, all you have to do is go on to the building departments, you know, a homepage, and right there, scroll down just a little bit, and there is a fill-in link, and it is so easy just to get your complaints in, um, so I just wanted to remind everyone of that.
Yeah, if I could just add to that, it is a complaint-driven system. We don't have the ability to go around and drive and have a code enforcement person or a zoning officer notice things, write it down and complain. If you complain, we will follow up on it, so, thank you, and we've been doing a lot more in that area, so I appreciate that. Jackie?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, tomorrow evening, the Commission for Persons with Disabilities will be holding their monthly meeting, uh, in the third floor meeting room next to the mayor's office, and it's at seven PM. The guest speaker will be Senator, uh, Henry Martin, so if you're interested in hearing what the senator has to say, I invite you to attend. Uh, secondly, just a reminder that the sanitary sewer smoke testing will begin on July fifteenth through July twenty-sixth. Any changes to those dates will be based on the weather. This process will be performed by Flow Assessment Services, and it is being conducted to locate sources of stormwater inflow into the city sewer system. Unauthorized connections to the city sanitary sewer system, say that three times fast, is a concern because EPA and DEEP standards mandate our inflow to the water pollution control facility. Where the testing will be performed is listed on the website, which can be found at www.bristol, www dot BristolCTwatersewer dot gov, and can also be accessed via the city's website. There's going to be a mass media campaign which will begin on June fourteenth, which will include the water and sewer website, social media, as well as strategically placed street signs. Uh, the notify me module will also be utilized, and if you want to stay informed, I recommend that you sign up for the notify me on the water and sewer website. Daily updates will be sent informing subscribers of the street locations for the smoke testing for the next business day. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Cheryl?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, I have a few announcements, and the first I want to do is I'm really excited about the Bristol Farmers Market. Um, we're going to be opening this well-honored, beloved staple of the community with the opening on Saturday, June twenty-second at ten AM. The Farmers Market will continue for twenty consecutive weeks and end on November second. Now, this is the first year that the market will come under our newly-formed, uh, nonprofit, and so we still are looking for volunteers. I particularly are looking for volunteers that want to help us administer the SNAP program. We've actually doubled our SNAP credits so that we can find, um, we can put more fruits and vegetables and healthy foods into some of the hands of some of our more needy. and vegetables and healthy foods into some of the hands of some of our more needy residents of the town. There's going to be a variety of products from fresh food, herbs, baked goods, and specialty items such as coffee, maple products, craft spirits, and organic snacks. There will be live entertainment and demonstrations throughout the season, so everybody put this on their calendar. We have a new home. The new home is 10 Main Street, and this is over here on the corner by 10 Main Street Cafe and so forth, so we're gonna have banners out there and making it real exciting, but that is a week from this Saturday, so that will be June 22nd, 10:00 AM. We have some upcoming shows at Downtown Live. We're real excited about this Saturday. This is a show geared towards our youth. It's Ada Twist, Scientists and Friends. It's a STEM-fueled musical that kids are gonna go home and conduct science experiments after they see this show, and there are plenty of tickets still available. The show is at 3:00 PM. On August 17th, we have Chris Funk's Redefining Wonder Show. It's a magic show with live music, so this one has, you know, brought down the house wherever he's performed, and don't forget Jimmy and the Parrots are coming September 7th, so we're really gonna be rocking out Downtown Live. For those of you in the business world that run restaurants, or bars, or cafes, we do have an RFP out to run the concessions at Downtown Live that can be found on the city's website. The bids are due in June 18th, so if this is you, or you know somebody who's in this business, we really would like to have several people, you know, take advantage of putting in a bid to do our concessions at Rockwell Theater. It's a great opportunity for local businesses to get involved. This is gonna be a destination, so please share that. On Wednesday, June 19th, is the Juneteenth Celebration from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. If you would like to attend, please go to the New England Carousels Museum's website and RSVP through there. The City Arts and Culture Commission is a proud sponsor of this event. There'll be music, food, vendors, and a brief program. I would like to wish all the fathers out there a very happy Father's Day, which is this Sunday, wishing you the best. And lastly, I want to do a shout-out and congratulate Bristol's latest Eagle Scout. This would be Hunter DeVoe Wells. His Court of Honor was held last Sunday, and his service project, he put together shower caddies full of needs for, you know, which you have the shower, toothpaste, toothbrushes, soap and so forth, and baskets with needed goods for our homeless. So he did, he put together several baskets, and we had the opportunity to meet him. He also placed taps at many of the veteran events. What a fine young man, so congratulations to Hunter. Thank you.
Thank you. Did we miss anything? I think we got that, very good. All righty, we will move on to number five, which is our Consent Agenda. Does anybody wish to withdraw anything off the Consent Agenda, number five? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Number six is Reports and Committee Reports. Sebastian, you're up first with the Ordinance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is contained, was contained in the packet here, it's just 12 pages. I think we all touched on this at some point. Came through Board of Public Works. I'll go ahead and read the motion here. I hereby move that Chapter 21 Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places, Article 2, Division 3, Contractors License, Section 21-66 through 21-76 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bristol, Connecticut is hereby included to read as follows. I further move that the city clerk publish said additions to the Code of Ordinances, and that they become effective upon the expiration of 14 days from the date of their publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the City of Bristol.
Second.
Great. Any other comments or questions on this? I know this one has been better on. Go ahead.
I'll include a motion to waive the reading of the.
Okay.
Since it's lengthy.
Okay, so, so we need a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? We'll go back to the original motion now, the approval of it. Any other comments or questions before we do that? Sebastian?
We, this is just updating language and requirements for contracting licenses permitting for paving, excavating city streets, they're quite dated, so we're updating a lot of the ordinances there.
Good, any Public Works comments from our Public Works?
No, it was well-needed, and it, one, it gives the city a little bit more teeth in holding contractors, you know, responsible for the work and the permits that they do. They've always been required to file, they've always been required to have certificates of insurance. It just gives them the option to make sure things are done in, you know, with a tighter timeline and laid out a scope a little bit stronger.
Great. Thanks, all right. I think we'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? Motion carries. We move on to number seven, which is Old Business. Does anybody have any old business?
Other committee reports?
Oh, God, yeah, I flew through that, there's nothing on there. First of all, let's go right down the path, because first of all, we'll do Sebastian, thank you.
Sure, I do have a few others, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So with some of the approvals and the consent tonight, Phase One is in progress with the Design Review Services and Commissioning Agent Services for Northeast Middle School, so we'll be able to get the ball rolling on plans for development there. Firehouse Building 3, at our last meeting, we went through some design review with Chris Nardi, our architect from Silver Preciselli, and we're developing alternate packages for some of the development there. Some door, medium to smaller size, alternate bids for bifold doors, potentially, ceiling height, floor finishes, things of that order, pending budgetary considerations as we go along the process that we may implement down the road and considering change orders, things of that like, so we're working on that. And in addition, through the Cemetery Commission, we're looking at our lawn care contract for about four of our cemeteries. It's been in place for a while now. We're exploring, you know, if we can save the city some money there and develop some other options for some of the lawn care for some of our cemeteries in the near future.
Excellent.
That's it.
Thank you. Eric, any committee reports?
Just Board of Ed. All the projects that they were working on and the construction are on time. The new oil tank was put in up at the Trippinsell Middle School. There was, with the school winding down right now, there was a lot of different awards. It was really good to see a lot of these kids being awarded, and how good these kids are really doing in the city. Also, was there, there was, they voted on a budget, and that was in a special meeting before the regular meeting, which was approved during the regular meeting, so hopefully they'll get that forwarded to Board of Finance and over here. That's about it.
Thank you. Thanks, Eric. Sue?
I have no committee reports, not because we're not all working very hard, but I think that we're in the process of doing some of the hard work, and I kind of predict that most of my committees are gonna have big reports next month.
All right, fair enough. Jackie?
No committee reports from me either.
All right, and Cheryl, I know you have one because you reminded me.
I am, so I have a couple. I just wanted to share that the Arts and Cultures Committee, we held our second Cultural Arts Festival last Saturday. It was well-attended, we had a wonderful day. There will be a third next year, so in June, keep an eye out for it. We do try to match it up with Free Museum Day and encourage people to also visit many of our museums. For Public Works, I had shared previously, the fall paving schedule is out. It can be found on my Facebook page or on the Public Works page. The Mellon Street Bridge is finishing punch list items and should open soon.
I made a video today, it's open today. I've got posted video after this, so, yeah. I don't mean to correct. That's a very good correction.
I love that correction. The sad news is we're gonna move to the East Street Bridge, and that's on the agenda tonight, but it will be a couple of weeks before they gear up, so, but these are good things. These are bridges that are identified. Public Works does have a list, just like the roads are rated, all the bridges are rated for their safety, for needs of repair, and so these ones are on the list, and this needs to happen for public safety. We also ask that when the East Street Bridge does close, that you remember there is, there are businesses located there, one in particular saw its business. We also have some businesses by Jerome, the Jerome Avenue Bridge, that we've got the Hidden Cafe, and we have a package store that definitely still need patronage from people, but these are necessary things. You know, I want to also remind everybody during this growing season that there is a vegetation, a vegetation policy that the Public Works has put out, because as you grow vegetation close to the roads, it should not exceed three feet, and you need to keep at least 25 feet from the nearest intersection. So if you watch your vegetation, please keep that in mind and trim that down, this is for safety. The policy is also available on the Public Works page. The Memorial Boulevard Bridge, there have been concerns of some items. Public Works, along with Parks and the Veterans Council, were planning to walk the bridge, identify a punch list to get those items taken care of. I know it's been a concern for many people out there in the community. New signage will also be put up shortly, instructing trucks to stay off the Boulevard. That signs, those signs were taken down during construction and other things, and that signs should go back up. Trucks are not to be on the Boulevard. There's been no change in what the city's ordinance and policies say. I have some great news from the Transportation Committee. We met, and we're going to take advantage of some funds coming from the state, and we've approved a list. We gave a positive recommendation for several bus shelters to be replaced or fixed, and this was in conjunction with Transportation and Public Works. So the following ones should be replaced, Gaylord Apartments, De Lorenzo Towers, Bristol Hospital up by 41 Brewster, Lake Avenue, the DOT lot, and the Senior Center. Now, we've asked for a couple other locations to have a shelter put in, a bus shelter. This includes Pine and Emmett, there's a lot of people who wait for the bus there, Hefburn by Stop &amp; Shop over here off Route 6, and Walmart on the eastbound side to install a bus shelter. I think either way, it could go on either side. People may have to cross if they wait in the shelter, but that list was approved, so we'll see what comes out of the state after this, and hopefully over the next couple years, we'll be able to, you know, one by one have these replaced or new ones built, so that's, if there is another location that you feel needs attention or has been neglected, please let me know so that we can continue to work on this matter, but those seem to be the ones that came to mind, and I think that is it for my committee report.
The bus station or the bus shelter over on Hope Street, is that just a temporary?
Yes, the, we didn't put those on this list because when we redesign, or when we finish the streetscapes here, those will be taken care of at that time.
I just knew that those definitely needed attention, so.
Thank you for that question.
Thank you, thank you.
Great. Anything else? Now we will officially move on to number seven, which is Old Business. Any old business? Hearing none, any new business? And we do have one new business item, I believe, Sebastian, you got that right?
I do, Mr. Mayor, if you give me a second to turn my phone on, I'd like to propose that motion.
All right. Give you a second. Pick it up here too in a second, I mean. A lot of text messages to that.
Takes a while.
Got it?
Yeah, I got it here.
And maybe I'll do a little prelude for this as well, too, so it's kind of out of order on the agenda. We will have unfortunately resignations later in the agenda, so this new item is being brought on to address one of those resignations. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the city council set a special election day of July 30th for the replacement of city council District 3, and have the city clerk notify the Secretary of State. This election will include early voting on July 24th through 27th as per new state requirements.
I have a second.
Second.
And just again to add.
Replacing all of District 3, I just need to clarify that.
There's actually one vacancy that we'll talk about when we get to resignations by state statute. Within 45 days of that resignation, we need to establish a special election day. We have to have our clerk do that, and so that's what we're officially doing right now. So again, it's out of order on the agenda, but it'll be more clear as we go forward. All right? Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We're good with that? Good? All right. Any other new business? Okay, hearing none, we will go on to resignations. By the way, the charter sets up our agenda, so you can't move these things around, but now we're gonna get to resignations, and it'll be a little more clear.
So I should probably start with that one.
Go ahead, that'll be good, yeah.
Councilmember Andrew Howe, District 3, resigned effective June 17. Maria Montelli Tramazo resigned from Transportation Commission. Jamie Bianca from Diversity Council. Olivia Chapdilane from Diversity Council, she was a 2-9. Anthony Pellerin from Inland Wetlands. Craig Vibert from Retirement Board was a 2-9.
I'd like to make a motion to put the resignations on file and send a letter of thanks to each of those listed.
Second.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Now we move on to appointments, and let me make sure I get the right list here, because we had a couple. All right, first is the Arts and Culture Commission. I'd like to entertain a motion to replace Tiffany Howe with Julie Christ. That term will expire on 5/27.
Of approval.
Second. Can we give Jackie the second? She was a little quicker than you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We're gonna do, I think when I sent the list out to all of you, BBHD is actually gonna be in July, because that's actually when it does expire. Board of Finance, we talked about this in the joint meeting, so we are going to entertain a motion to replace Ron Burns with Nicole Duquette. Her term will expire at the end of June in 2028. Mark Whitford will be replaced with William T. Campion. That term will also expire at the end of June in 2028, and both of these will become effective on July 1.
Move approval.
Second, okay.
Right? All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? Motion carries. We, on the Bristol Historic Commission, I think I need a motion for this one, but we'll just do it to be safe. I'm gonna make a motion that we move Andrew Collins up from an alternate member to a full member. That will now expire on 1/21 of 2029, and this actually balances out that board. There were two alternates, but it needed a non-Democrat-registered person on it, so we are doing that to fill out that board.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is anybody opposed?
You got a, you get a raise, if we double, you're paying for that.
He's here, I didn't get to tell him that, but now, now you're a full member. Great, we move on to the Disabilities Commission. We have three members that we will reappoint. The first is Dan McCary, and his term will expire on 6/27. Joe Krolakowski, the term will expire on June of 27, and Barbara Bajurney, and that term will also expire on June of 27.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. On the Retirement Board, Matt Regany will replace Craig Vibert that we saw up above. Craig was unfortunately a 2-9 resignation. This is part of the charter that there has to be a 1338 representative, so Matt will be that representative, and that term will expire on July of 2028.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We have a reappointment of David White. He's actually the chairman of the Zoning Commission. His new term will expire on June of 27.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. We will replace Anthony Pellerin with Laura Valentino on the Inland Wetlands Commission, that will expire on, in January of 27.
Move approval.
Second.
Jackie got that one, I think. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Erica, we got them all right? Think so? Very good.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I know it was kind of a little awkward how we had to do the new business before we did the resignations.
Yep.
And maybe I'm, I'm in the wrong point when I say this, but could we just kind of review for those who might be listening, the dates of when the special election will be for the council because they might not have been able to pull that out of the motion? And I think to give it clarity, it might be helpful to some people.
Yeah, so I'll just, I'll speak on that from a broader level, too. So both the Democratic Town Committee and the Republican Town Committee, next week, by the 21st, the latest, will have to nominate a candidate to be up for that position. This will be an open election and that, the, the people that are chosen from each party will go against each other on July 30th. So July 30th is the actual special election day. The one thing I didn't see, ladies, and maybe Erica might know, we were looking to see if we can do that at one polling location. Did we get the answer from the Secretary of State?
No, we did not.
We did not. So we're looking to do that, but if it's not at one location, it will be at the Eastern High School, Baines or Memorial Boulevard and Green Hills. We're looking to try to make it at Baines. There's actually programs going on at these, those other two schools during that week. And this, so that's election day is July 30th and the four days prior, which is the 24th through the 27th, I think, right? Because then we do it through the Saturday and then you have the election on the 30th. That will be early voting, which we did for the first time in the preferential primary.
And that'll be here at City Hall.
That will be at City Hall, yes, in City Council chambers. Now, I don't want to confuse people, but right after that, we have an August 2nd primary on the Republican side for US Senate, so it makes these things very difficult. And then after that, we'll have the presidential election in November. So it's a busy, busy season. Any questions from the council on that, too? Important?
No.
Good.
Thank you.
I appreciate you bringing that up again and hopefully it's very clear for everybody, which is good. All right. We move on to number 11, which is a Board of Education request. Can I have somebody read that motion?
We're all trying to open it.
Yeah.
Yep. I have it here.
Yeah, I make, I think it's this, I make a motion to approve D'Amato Downs Joint Venture D'Amato Construction and/or Downs Construction. No, I'm not reading the right thing, am I?
Yep, no, that's good.
Okay. The ability to submit bids and self-perform on certain packages and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any documents necessary to amend their contract.
Can we have a second?
Second.
Great. And let me just add a little clarity to this that I have, but I might need some help as well. So the state did not allow for self-performing for those that win these bids and then they changed the state statute to allow that, but we need to give permission. So we added another layer on this basically to say that we want to give that permission to make sure that the person who is doing the self-bidding is also governed by some type of construction manager process. So it's just not them, but they'll have a third-party review of that. I think I got that pretty good. Guys heading out over there, which I like. Questions or comments from anybody here? By the way, this is exactly the way the Baines Theater was done and we even had some of this at City Hall. Roger? Good? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We move on to number 12, which is a grant request. We'll start with 12A. They're both grant requests. I'll entertain a motion to authorize the Bristol Police Department to accept and accept if granted for the fiscal year 24, the US Department of Justice Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant for a total of $39,975. The local match is $19,966 or 50% of the total and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any documents necessary.
Second.
We got a move and a second to my right. You got it. Sue got the second and Jackie got the motion. Questions or comments on this? This is a yearly grant and I actually, I found out, too, that this really is going to help every officer have, you know, brand-new safety equipment, so it's a good thing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Second grant request is I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to continue to execute purchase of service contract number 22, is that a zero, O-E-C-C-D-C 01-B-R-S-82 with the State of Connecticut Office of Early Childhood for a contract period of 6/27/2022 through 6/30/2025 in the amount of $2,543,713.17 and refer to the Board of Finance for necessary action.
Move approval.
Second.
Great. I see Donna online. Donna, do you want to add anything to this?
Good evening, council and mayor. The only thing I'll add is that this is a formality. The Office of Early Childhood is extending all of their grants and contracts this year. This should have been a renewal, like a two-year new contract coming up, but they're extending it and we needed to go through the protocols. So they're all, so the grant is, or the contract is for more money for a new year of funding as well as a sort of transitional set of weeks and it's to serve 56 infants and toddlers at Bristol Child Development Center.
You covered it well. I can't imagine we would have questions, but do we? No? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And Donna, I know there's a time sensitivity on this. I actually have the document to sign in my office, so you can come get it as soon as you can.
All right. I'll see you in the morning.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
All right. Number 13 is contracts. We've got quite a few this month. The first one is A. So I'll read it. I'll entertain a motion to award contract 2C24-096, replacement of bridge number 04487, East Street over Pequod River to Schultz Corporation in the amount of $2,599,499.52 and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to effect said contract.
Move approval.
Second.
Great. And as we talked about earlier, this is the second bridge replacement along the Boulevard. Probably should start by the end of July is what they're looking at, so any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. B is entertain a motion to award contract 2P24076, Construction Engineering and Inspection Services for the Reconstruction of the East Bridge over Pequod River to Wengill, McDonald and Costello Incorporated in the amount of $364,600 and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to effect said contract.
So move.
Second.
Same process. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. C is entertain a motion to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute an Energy Efficiency Services Letter of Agreement with EverSource Energy and to refer to the Office of Corporation Counsel for review.
So move.
Second. Great. And this will go under further review from Corp Counsel, so pretty pro forma here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. D, entertain a motion to award contract 2P24073, Comprehensive Lighting Improvements at Municipal Buildings to Resource Lighting and Energy in Corporation in the Amount of $204,136 and to refer to the Office of Corporation Counsel for Contract Review and to authorize the mayor or the acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to effect said contract.
Move approval. Second.
Questions or comments on this one? Roger, just to be sure on this one, too, this is the one where we've been trying to pull all of these together. I know we went close to the Board of Finance to do some of these, or is this a different one?
No, this is, this is the one. This is, Public Works has done a great job in terms of pursuing energy efficiency initiatives. This is a lighting program. EverSource is giving funding towards doing those lighting replacement programs, but they do have certain conditions that they have to meet in terms of the efficiency measures that these light fixtures give to us. So basically, they give us a grant, but there's also another component. There is a zero-interest loan that's tagged to it. So for our portion, we are executing a loan with them that'll be taken care of on the Board of Finance end for a five-year, 0% interest loan and that'll roughly cover the payback period for our investment in these fixtures. So after five years, our cost will go considerably down for electricity, for lighting for these buildings. During the course of that time, that loan payment will just be reflected on the regular monthly EverSource bill.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. E, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2024-25 Regional Emergency Medical Services Communication Systems Agreement with the North Central Connecticut Emergency Med, Medical Services Council and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute the agreement. This is a yearly agreement. This one's really pretty pro forma and of formality. So entertain the motion.
So move. Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right. F and final contract, I'll entertain a motion to consider an Intertown Agreement with the Town of Plymouth for the Use of the City of Bristol Animal Control Facility and to take any action as necessary.
So move.
Approval.
Second.
Second to Sebastian. All right. On this one, we have a one-year contract. It is going to start to partner with the Town of Plymouth. We actually have some crossover service with the animal control officers themselves. They typically brought their animals to Watertown and we're bringing them into the fold in Bristol to hopefully fill up our new animal control facility. And we actually hope to maybe expand this in the future, but this is a very simple contract where we're just going to get paid by Plymouth to house their animals. They, they don't have probably more than 30 or 40 animal calls a year, so it's kind of small at this point, but this is just to have them pay us for those services.
Through the chairs, a set amount for the year, is it per animal?
Per animal.
Okay.
Through, it went, through the chair, this one was just a little confusing because the motion is to consider entering into an agreement, but we are entering into an agreement, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I think that's a good point. So I would then entertain the motion to amend that motion. Sorry. Why don't you go ahead and do it the best you can and then we'll, we'll get it fixed.
Um, okay.
Prove and entertain an agreement.
So, right. So to amend, so I make a new motion? Or just change the current?
You can amend.
The one that's on here.
You can move to amend.
Okay. I move to amend the original motion to enter into an agree, Intertown Agreement with the Town of Plymouth.
Second.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Now we go back and the amended motion, we're going to vote on it right now. So any other questions, though?
I guess it was to what extent this agreement is? So it's just to house animals and there's a cost per animal?
Yep. A small fee, to be honest, but that was approved through the Police Department and the ACO Services. It's basically just absorbing the cost and passing that along to Plymouth at this point. And again, one of our goals, because we're building a beautiful animal control facility, is to try to regionalize this a little bit. And if we can get a third town in, we would then probably be able to cover the ACO services in those towns with two or three ACO officers. We have two of our own right now.
So we pay per animal to store, to hold?
Mm-hmm.
But what happens when like Plymouth picks up a dog, brings it to our pound and then a couple of hours later, the owner contacts Plymouth? Is Plymouth going to have access to our pound? Is this going to require an extra cost having Bristol Mako having to respond there to let the owner in? And like what, you know, what's the cost and is that going to be billed back also to Plymouth?
So generally, I want to answer this, but then he's going to be more specific in that question. Generally, any additional costs are on the backs of Plymouth. So you had a vet fee or you had shots or other services, that's going to be on them. How the actual intricacies of Plymouth responding back to a call or something like that, I'm going to let Chief Marilla.
One other question through the chair?
Let me answer that one first, then I'll get to you. Go ahead.
Yeah, and to that point, advertising and stuff, that would all fall back on Plymouth. So they have their own animals, they're responsible for their own record-keeping.
Feeding.
We'll, we'll.
Or that's going to be into the one fee? Okay.
And Plymouth would come out and, I mean, if we have our ACOs working and meeting with them, I don't think just out of common courtesy would handle it, but Plymouth can come and handle their own transactions as well, so.
My other question is, we're not going to be sending any of our AS, our animal control to Plymouth, are we? Okay. I just want to make sure.
They will continue to subcontract that out. That's the way they look at it right now, so.
No, I was concerned about vet bills, too, and so forth, so thank you for answering that. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, there's a second part to that motion that the town clerk asked me to make sure we do.
Sure.
I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute the Intertown Agreement on behalf of the City of Bristol.
It's pretty important. So that's, can we do that as a new motion? Is that all right?
I just moved it, though.
Yeah. Okay. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Sorry about that. I got to be careful when I read these to let you guys do the motions, but I was trying to move us along. It was the last contract. We had a bunch. I didn't miss any, did I?
Nope.
We're good. All right. Number 14 is the Connecticut Light and Power Company Resolution and since it's a resolution, I'm going to let somebody go ahead and read that and take my own advice and then we'll have a roll call vote.
I make a motion to consider and approve a resolution to grant CT Light and Power Company DBA EverSource Energy a permanent easement on city property on Kelly Street in conjunction with the Meadow Street Garage Project.
Second.
All right. Roll call vote.
Do we have to read the resolution?
Yeah.
We do.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Be it resolved that the City of Bristol grant and convey to the Connecticut Light and Power Company DBA EverSource Energy, a corporation chartered by the General Assembly of the State of Connecticut and having its principal office in Burling, Connecticut, its assessors and assign permanent rights for the installation and maintenance and repairs of electric and gas lines over, under, and across land of the City of Bristol situated within the City of Bristol as set forth in the easement presented to this meeting in which easement is more fully described on map Q666 filed in the land records of the City of Bristol and said easement is hereby ordered filed with the records of this meeting and resolved that the mayor, the City of Bristol, be he, be and he be authorized to execute and deliver in the name of the city an easement presented to this meeting and to do any other and all other acts to effectuate the foregoing. Second.
Great. We, I don't know that we technically needed a second on that because we were just reading, we didn't waive the reading this time, which is fine. So the motion on the floor is to approve that resolution and we'll do a roll call vote. Go ahead.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Panniotto.
Aye.
Councilmember Rosengren.
Aye.
Councilmember Tebow.
Aye.
Councilmember Tyler.
Aye.
And mayor.
Yes.[1644.51]